Next candidate of the evening is Mr. Wood. Before we kick off with our questions, why don't I have the school committee members do quick introductions and then we'll give you the opportunity to make an opening statement.
Great.
Okay, Mr. Mullis.
Hi, thank you for being here. We met briefly a little while ago, but again, I'm Manny Mullis. Been in the school committee for a few years and we are very happy to have you here tonight.
Great, thank you.
Hello, I'm Jen Bryson, School Committee.
Nice to see you again, MJ Burns.
Hi there, Julie Broussard.
Hi, good to see you again, Peggy Kane.
And Tom Talbot.
Great. So, thank you for inviting me back. It's truly an honor. I've truly enjoyed my day here in Wilmington. I learned a lot about your school system and the different facets of it. I truly enjoyed meeting the administrative team and the teachers and students that I got the chance to meet and I definitely see a great fit for my leadership skills. In my candidacy, you get a very experienced superintendent of schools who has had held seats in a variety of capacities in school systems as he's grown and matured and learned along the way and I'm ready to put my skills to the test in terms of being the next superintendent in Wilmington. So, thank you for having me.
Great, thank you for being with us. Mr. Mullis, I'm going to start off with you again.
Great. So, Michael, you've had the opportunity to visit our district. You spent the full day here and meeting community members and talking with teachers and administrators and staff. Could you tell us how our district compares to your current district and how is it different?
Sure. So, the immediate observations are obvious. It's larger. My current district has about 1,600 students and has four schools. Three of them are on the same campus, so it's geographically easier to get to everything. But from there, the differences really start to meld together. I saw a lot of examples of great teaching, engaged students, and similarities in the practices, in visions, for example, the software and text that we're using in our school system. You're using the Readers and Writers Workshop, which is a model that we're using. So, in terms of curriculum and instructional practices, you're using a lot of the same materials and approaches that we're currently using. You're also struggling, I think, with some of the same issues that our, the Lester school system is suffering from. We are in desperate need to develop and foster an understanding of social-emotional learning and develop the kinds of programs that support kids, both kids who are identified through special education process and those who are in the need of supports but may not have been identified in a more formal manner. And so, we're in the process of looking at building programming for a number of different areas. That is one of them with a pretty strong PBIS initiative in our K through five area and I hear it and sense it here as well, but also looking at growing that up six through 12 and looking what PBIS looks like age and developmentally appropriate for adolescents and young adults. So, there are a lot of similarities. I think you're in a much better place financially than Lester is, which I compliment all of those who have contributed to that and the relationship that you have among all of the players at the table, which I think is so important and so key. And, you know, I think there's some lessons that people should go on the road and share with other municipalities because I think that's really key. You know, in terms of the, those are, I would say, the major differences and similarities of the two school systems. I think where you're performing better than Lester is in terms of MCAS, but I also see, you know, similar kinds of performance around the areas of the subgroups. So, there's work there that I'm certainly very familiar with.
Thank you.
Hi, my question is about decisions regarding programs. So, when making decisions about programs being considered as additions, modifications, or deletions from the budget, what data do you use to make those decisions? And if you could just give us maybe an example of when you've done that, that would be great.
Sure. So, if you're talking strictly about educational programming, the data that I look at is really a couple of different data points. One is obviously student data in terms of what we're looking at for performance and that can come from a number of different sources. It can be our local sources with assessments and so forth that we're using locally. It can be our MCAS or our MCAS data or the MCAS 2.0s, it's coming to be known. But also some qualitative pieces because I think it's important, especially when you're looking at some programs, what the history of the programming is. I think it's necessary to know that. It's not necessarily a high point value, but it's something I think people need to know and respect. And also the impact on the school in terms of making those decisions. There are lots of components to running and managing a school and so if we're talking about simply eliminating a programming, a program or adding a program, we have to look at everything from the space allocated to the program, to the staff needed for the program, but also all of those aspects of running the school, what kind of staff is needed to manage recesses and supervision and those pieces as well. So, you have to look at decisions about program elimination or addition in terms of how it's going to impact that local school and those would be the data points that I would look at.
Thank you. I think, from the standpoint of your own career, what would be three of the most important accomplishments you've made as an educator in the past five years and what do you see as one or two challenges upon which you would focus if you were appointed as our superintendent of schools?
I think the three accomplishments that I've made in the last three to five years, I think, well, first of all, I would say finishing and completing a building project on time and under budget, I think was a very successful piece. I was only part of the building committee, but, you know, we worked exceptionally well together and I think that the Town of Stowe did a fabulous job of putting together the building committee in terms of the membership, which contributed greatly to the project being successful at the annual town meeting. But just in general, around that project, the completion of the building project, we ran into a number of different issues that I think that, again, working with the OPM and my director of facilities at the time, we were able to marshal through pretty successfully in short order. We lost our contractor pretty close to the end of the project and that was certainly a difficult issue. We were about to lose our second contractor because of scheduling conflicts and we were able to, you know, be able to finish the punch list pretty effectively and successfully. So, all in all, we were able to open on time, move our students into the school and really have a successful opening of the school and it's, everything's running, which is great. A second accomplishment, I would say, in the last three to five years would be in my current role, talking earlier about the social-emotional learning and the program development. When I first arrived in Lester, one of the first things that was obvious to me and tasked to me was to really look at our out-of-district placements and why we were having an increase in the number of out-of-district placements. It became pretty obvious pretty quickly because we didn't have the programming. We didn't have the services that we needed. A year before my arrival, the district did commit pretty considerably to hiring a BCBA for each school and hiring a school psychologist for each school. So, we were going in the right direction, but we didn't really have a coordinated service plan. So, since I've been there, we have developed that plan. We're developing programs for a particular group of students for life skills. We started a class this year, excuse me, we started a class at the beginning of this year in September of 2017. We started one in January 2018 and we have it on the docket to start in September of 2019 for another school. So, those are three different programs that would complete the pipeline and the continuum of services for a group of kids that will need services and I think will stem the tide of students needing services outside of our district because we're going to be, I think, well-planned for and well-developed for that. And a last accomplishment, I would say, I would say that, going back to my role in Shoba, I think the accomplishment there is, especially at the time, would be developing a professional culture that really developed over time. It took a while, but I think the attitude and development of our teachers and our administration toward a common vision and a common understanding of how to implement that vision was realized, really in the last few years of my tenure, by a number of activities that we did. One, which was a professional development day that we had that was totally planned for by our teacher committee, totally staffed by our teachers who committed to doing workshops for each other. I'd say a good majority of them, we just, we needed more just because of the number of teachers that we were servicing. And they were just incredible days of teachers coming together to teach teachers. So, I think those were really big accomplishments in the last three to five years.
Great. No, just to follow, what do you see as one or two challenges upon which you would focus if you were appointed as our superintendent of schools?
So, I think the first area of entry that I would pay attention to is trying to really hone in with the school committee's assistants and the staff here and the broader community is, you know, what is the vision of the Wilmington School District and where do we want to be in five, 10, 15 years? And what are the components of making that a reality? In my past, I facilitated and I've also been part of large, there's a, the most recent one that I participated in, it was called Future Search, in which we brought about 85 people together in Lester and we talked about where are we going as a school system and how do we want to make that a reality? And it was a very uplifting, successful day of, again, these 85 people coming together, volunteer of their time, and really just talking about what they wanted to see for education in their schools, for activities surrounding the school day, and just trying to develop a plan for where we were headed as a school department. And I would definitely see that as a challenge to pull together, but I just, I think that that is something we need and it's something that I think Wilmington would benefit from greatly. I would say a second challenge would be, maybe as an offshoot of that, as we understand better what our vision is for the five to 10-year plan, is where are we in terms of the kinds of facilities that we need to make that plan a reality? And how do we want to be organized in those facilities? And what kinds of structures do we need within those facilities in terms of programs and the kind of staff that we need to have to service those programs?
Great, thank you very much.
It's a big challenge.
Thank you. What do you perceive as the superintendent's role in the greater community? You know, if you could give us some examples of perhaps how you've worked with other community leaders, municipal leaders?
Sure.
People in those positions.
So, the biggest role that I think the superintendent has is to be the cheerleader for the community in every event that he attends in terms of making sure that people understand why, what we're proud of and why we do what we do. And so, you know, as I work with the boards of selectmen, whether it be from our community or surrounding communities, have various functions, it's my job to educate people about what we do here and to make people aware of why we educate kids the way we do and what we need for the resources for those services and to make sure people who can complement our services, that is, work with us to make them stronger and more open and accessible to our kids. It's, that's part of that cheerleading work that I need to do in terms of finding those partnerships and making those exercises successful for our kids and our teachers.
Mrs. Kane.
Thank you. One of the things that we have talked about in education is the idea of consistency within a school system and that people who are teaching, say, second grade and that on the stars this week, you should be on the stars, I should be on the stars, we should both be on page 12. That seems to be how some people have taken it. How would you explain to students, or maybe you agree with that, that how is consistency used across the curriculum?
So...
And what does it mean?
So, for me, you know, we have a very well-articulated framework here in Massachusetts for the standards. And for me, it's about those standards and how they're articulated within our curriculum in Wilmington. So, I want us to have consistency by making sure that our teachers know what the, what the standards are for their particular grades and how to implement them in their particular classes. There are content-specific elements that we also need to be consistent about as well because we need to prepare them for, you know, in each year, it's a development for, toward, when they do get into high school. But I think there can be some variability in that content and there can be a range in that content. We hire professionals for a reason. They are facing the kids. They know best when they need to make those alterations in their planning, but obviously for consistency purposes and for conservancy of the materials that we have to purchase, we need to have teachers have sort of a body of content at each grade level that we say absolutely every second grader gets. And then around the periphery allows some flexibility for teachers in terms of filling out their year. And to have some flexibility to meet the kids specifically or sitting in front of them who might need a different area because there's, they have such a high interest in a particular area and let that interest be a driver in terms of what some of the content is. So, there's a, for me, there's kind of like a pinwheel, so you've got that core, which is the standards, and then outside you have the, there's specific content so that we can have some understanding of what we need to purchase. And then there's this other outside ring that we entrust our teachers to have the professional judgment and wisdom to match and align with the kids that are seated before them.
Interesting, thank you.
Mr. Talbot.
Thank you for coming tonight. I guess my question is, what is your manager, management style, excuse me, and how do you think it will kind of, we've been through a rough past few years, kind of steady the ship, so to speak?
So, I think one word that would define my management style is approachable. You know, I want people to come to me and to work with me and invite me into their settings so that we can have good conversations, honest conversations. So, it's, my management style incorporates people having the opportunity to have good dialogue around the problems that we're having, but also successes and celebrate those successes. And so, I want an open dialogue about what's going on in the, in the schools and the classrooms in the community. And so, you know, along with that approachable, it has to be respectful and that dialogue has to be one that allows us both to hear and listen to one another, but also to appreciate the context and the perspective that we're having. And lastly, I would just say that I'm highly organized and I need to have people who work with me to understand that's who I am. I can work with a lot of different learning styles, it's the teacher in me, but ultimately when there are tasks to be done and there are schedules to be met, I'm expecting them to be met. And so, I need people to respect that about when those are asked for. So, I think those would be the three major components that describe my work style and my management style.
Thank you.
Mr. Mullis.
Thank you. So, talk to us about how you go about collaborating with other teachers and administrators and more importantly, how do you deal with them when they express views that you oppose?
So, I think that, again, to have that respectful dialogue, it's not as much about opposing other views. It's about trying to be present in mind to be able to probe what those views are and ask, you know, why they think the way they do, what data they're using to inform their thinking and to, you know, be open to listening to what, and changing your own mind about some of the views that you hold. You know, I've been at this profession for a long time. I definitely have some strong values and strong views about how kids learn and, but I'm still open to learning more ways that kids can learn and be engaged in the classroom. And so, you know, my approach is to use questions, to probe people's thoughts and people's answers and their opinions and to help the conversation have that civil context to it, to make sure that people understand what our norms are for having difficult conversations. But, you know, at the end of the conversation, what I want to be able to go back to is, what was the purpose of the conversation? What were we trying to accomplish during the conversation or by the end of the conversation? And sort of pick the highlights of the conversation and say, okay, where are we? And try to move us forward. I'm a pragmatist. I really believe that it's about trying to find those pieces of the conversation that help us move forward. I'm not about having a confrontation with people and, you know, unless it truly disrespects me and my values, it's not going to be a confrontation. It's going to be a question and answer.
Okay, thank you.
You mentioned your teaching. Can you tell us a little bit about how your teaching experience has helped, kind of influenced you in your role as a district leader?
Sure. I look very fondly back at my teaching experience. In some ways, it was the hardest work that I did and have done in some respects, but it, I still consider myself a teacher in the work that I do in an administrative role. It's to get to deep understanding. And so, you know, I think in terms of what I learned most from my teaching experience that has informed my leadership, it's about taking risks. I think I told a particular group today, I got into special education actually because of a colleague, Director of Special Ed, who was looking for volunteers to look at a, an alternative way to identify specific learning disabilities and to develop curriculum-based assessments to do that. And that so intrigued me that I said, sure, I'll do that. And a colleague in my building at the time agreed to participate as well and so we embarked on a roughly a two to, it was roughly a two-year study, but it got us thinking. It led me to coming down to Boston University to enter into a doctoral program and it really made me, I think, open my eyes to how kids learn and more importantly, how kids should be assessed so that we can show their learning. That's really informed me in terms of how I lead and develop those kinds of questions that I ask when I'm in those difficult conversations. It was an eye-opening experience. I wish it went further than it did, but it definitely was an eye-opening experience and that, that culminated nine years of teaching that really said to me, I'm ready now to take what I've learned about teaching and learning and go to that next level and become an administrator. And I became a principal shortly thereafter. So, you know, that was work that I think was a good foundation, that teaching experience was a good foundation for where I am today.
Thank you. Okay. There has been a discussion taking root in the world of education. Luxorian educator Jack Marr lectures that in order for our children to have to compete for jobs of the future with machines, we need to abandon our current practices of teaching knowledge-based skills and instead teach them soft skills such as values, believing and independent thinking, caring for others, building upon individual and unique skills. Dr. Bill Daggett, founder and chair of the International Center for Learning and Education, also speaks of the fourth industrial revolution that the world is currently entering and how education needs to move towards more rigorous and relevant skills and knowledge for all students in order for them to be able to access the jobs of tomorrow. What is your view of this discussion and if chosen as superintendent, how well or could it drive education within our district?
So, I think it's absolutely true that we do not know today what the knowledge base is that's going to be needed for the kids who are entering in our preschool and going to be graduating in 13 years. It's just, it's just not possible for us to know. That being said, what we do know are the skills that you described as the soft skills. We do know that they're going to have to work with other people. They're going to have to have conversations. They're going to have to have disagreements. They're going to have to look at problems and figure out solutions and they're going to have to have strategies to solve those solutions. So, there, there is, I believe, to me, that's content of a different nature, but it's content that we need to teach our kids and it should be foundational and I think it is now in our core curriculum, in the frameworks, for us to teach the critical thinking components in the social-emotional learning piece now, which will soon be released, those, those standards that really look at how people need to interact with people. And then the rudimentary skills that we need to have that are, we believe now, to be somewhat foundational for all kinds of future learning and/or future kinds of jobs that might be out there that we, we don't know necessarily what are out there, will be out there yet. And those three pieces, I think, do have to be part of what we do every day with kids. On top of that comes that bigger array of content that allows us to participate in a worldview. So, you know, really understanding the cultural aspects of a world that most of us have not experienced yet, but I think our kids will need to because they're going to be working in a much more, the world is going to be much smaller as we, as our kids grow up and they're going to be working with cultures that they don't have any awareness of and they're going to have to figure out how to do it in a polite and respectful way. And that's going to include everything from learning language, learning geography, learning how to talk culturally appropriately so that you don't insult your coworker from another country. And those, all of those soft skills, if you will, I think are integral to what we need to be doing in public schools today.
Thank you.
Great. At risk of sounding a little bit redundant, Mr. Talbot's question to you was an area that I'd like to explore a little bit further because I'm hearing a theme of communication and dialogue this evening. And certainly as, as we know, Wilmington has had our share of challenges in the last few years and it's become quite clear to us that superintendents really need to be masters at public relations. How do you communicate with people? But in the delicate situations, how, how would you propose communicating with the parents and staff and greater community so that people feel safe and secure and feel like they have the information they need at the same time maintaining confidentiality, maintaining privacy, and quite frankly, following the law?
Right. So, starting working backwards?
Sure.
You, you have to follow the law. You have to follow the policies of the school committee. You have to respect the individual rights of employees and students. And so, that's a given and what you have to do is you have to communicate that and not, again, kind of going back to being that teacher in me, you have to teach people that that's, that's just the law. I'm not picking a particular event to start clamming up about, talking about confidentiality. It's just the law. So, I think that what you, I'm not sure I'm a master of it, I'll be perfectly honest, but I do believe that I am very good at making... but I do believe that I am very good at making sure that what I know, and when I know it, the people who need to know it, find out. I think that's really critical. I think that's probably where leaders make their mistakes, is we don't release what we know in a timely fashion when we have every right to be able to release it. So, you have to think about what's your media campaign, if you will, around a big issue. Tell people what you know, when you know it, and always end with more to come as I am able to release the information, so that you give people the understanding that you're not hiding anything, you're not trying to create mystery, because that doesn't do anybody any good. That creates a morale issue. It can create a climate issue within the schools, and we don't want that. We don't want things that interrupt our work, working with kids. So, tell them what you know, tell them when you know it, and give them a sense of when you're going to keep telling them as you find things out. You know, you've got to, you've got to use the media that they use, and you've got to make sure that it's a, again, a regular resource. I like to have a, when I was at Neshoba, I had a regular TV program, and so I could talk to issues, and I thought that was very helpful. I'm not sure what my Nielsen ratings were, but I did enjoy doing it. But, you know, doing a blog today, I think, is a way to do it. You have to educate them continuously, not just in the event of the emergency or the bigger news item. You've got to, you've got to figure out ways to just continuously let people know what to expect when something happens so that they can be ready, too. And so, that comes from those ongoing communications that go home.
Great. Thank you. Mrs. Kane?
Thank you. We've been, we've done a really great job, I think, in Wilmington in bringing forward people who, I'll come back up here, are helpers in the social-emotional areas. And, but, as we've done and put more into this the last couple of years, it's occurred to me that we also have adults in the system who are, have, you know, maybe dealing with cancer at their home, or dealing with something that personal but still there, and then they're expected to deal with the kids in the daytime with, who have their problems and issues. And I'm just wondering if you're, how in this social-emotional era do we cover the adults so that they feel safe, so that they know there's a place they could go to, or if there is a place? And I know we have to cover the children, and we do a good job at that, and I'm just thinking, maybe the adults don't want to be covered, but maybe they do. So, would you do anything in that area?
Sure. So, I think each school, just from experience, has that informal network of support systems for the adult learners to reach out and share with somebody a, an event that's going on in their life that is dominating their, their thinking and their waking moments. I think that's really important, that the leadership of each building and the leadership from my office, you know, creates that necessity for that, the climate to be such, that they have a significant adult that they can go to. That being said, I think that, you know, you raise a great point. I'm not, I'm not sure what you have available, but most districts have, through their insurance companies, an employee assistance program that gives access for counseling and other kinds of resources, to support groups to, you know, reach out to for the adults, and make sure that we educate our staff, that those are available. And I think those are an important resource to take advantage of. But I think that it will always come back to that, that significant adult that they have in their building, that we want to train each other, if you will, to basically say, you know, kind of going back to the communication issue, what do we need to know so that we can support you, but also make sure that our kids are getting what they need? Because they're coming to school expecting to be educated. Parents are expecting that when we're in front of them, we're 100%. And not everybody can compartmentalize. But I think through our leadership in our buildings and the leadership at Central Office, we need to create the culture that says, you can come to us and talk to us, and we're going to work with you to get to the other side of what your, your needs present.
Thank you.
Our last interim and current interim superintendent left you some big shoes to fill. So how do, you know, what do you see the biggest challenges taking on this role?
So, I think, as, you know, I talked earlier, I think the first challenge is, is trying to gain, getting up to speed quickly, so that, because, you know, the start is July 1, it's when there are very few people here. But it does give me time to get to know the Central Office staff and really get up to speed with some of the organizational pieces that I think are critical for me to understand to be able to start the school year. But then, from there, it takes time to be in the buildings, to meet with people for a variety of reasons that will help me understand a little bit more what the challenges are before making assumptions. Because again, I don't want to go down paths that are not the priorities. But I would certainly confer with Paul and Sean, and make sure that they are helping me get up to speed rather quickly, and then all the other administrators in the district to really understand what my short list of priorities are between July and September, so that we can get to the bigger challenges that might be out there and start planning our mode of attack. And of course, all of you are a key part of that communication. I need to, you know, I don't know if you do a summer retreat or not, but I think that would be a great way for me to get into your heads and think about what your needs are in terms of our communication, our first months working together. And again, mapping out how I'm going to find out more about those challenges. And so, you know, Paul's not going anywhere, Sean, hopefully he's not going anywhere. We're going to be able to, you know, really have time to map out those first few weeks, and then when everybody's back, really hitting the ground and getting a better understanding by meeting with the teachers and the staff.
Great. I was just making sure that my fellow school committee members are getting the opportunity to ask those questions, but they're learning to know the answers to. I'm also going to acknowledge to our audience here, there have been opportunities to meet with Mr. Wood over the course of the day today, so we will not be allowing for public comment at this session here. This is our turn to ask the questions and get to know you. So I will jump back over to Mr. Mullis.
Thank you. I want to go back to the topic that Mrs. Prusart brought up regarding communication and information. Over the past few years, we've had some challenges in, from social media, in both on the student level and on the parents as well. So the question I have for you, and the reason I'm asking the question, because social media is now going away.
Right.
And, you know, it's being used. My question to you is, and it's a three-part question, is what is the role of social media and education as a whole? And what do you see as positives as social media in your role as superintendent? And how would you respond to issues, mostly negative issues, that relate to social media? How will, how will you manage it?
Sure. So, earlier today, I am, you're right, social media is not going away. And we definitely have to have a sense of understanding who's out there and what they're saying. I, myself, am not somebody that trolls social media to find out negative things being said about me, or said about the school system that I'm working on. I just don't do that. I don't think that's necessarily helpful, and it just doesn't inform the conversation. But when things are reported, and they will be, I think that our job is to use the mediums that we think are most appropriate, and it might be the same social media, but they may be other mediums as well, and use the opportunity to talk about what the appropriate norms are for social media, and to continuously barrage social media with those appropriate norms. It is not appropriate to use social media to advance a particular student issue or a particular issue relative to trying to get one of us to change our minds about a particular stand we've taken. It's just, it's not the way to do it. But there are ways to use social media from, that are positive from our vantage point, is to use them to educate people, to tell people when and where we're talking about the issues that we think are important, and hopefully they are the same issues, but we're going to talk about them as policy and programmatic issues, not as personal issues. And to really educate parents and students and teachers who might use the social media to sort of gain favor for their particular issue. And educate them what the proper protocol is, what the chain of command is. Talk to people face-to-face, call them up on the phone. Those are the ways to get a conversation started. And I think that if, that's one of the big challenges that I need to tackle first head-on, you know, that's the approach that I'm going to take. I think it's really important that we simply don't, we don't use social media to do what others might be using it for. In other words, we're not going to use it to speak ill of people or institutions. We're going to use it to educate people about what our policies, what our practices are, and to inform people of when it's appropriate to come in and talk to us about the concerns that they have. I think the, obviously, the negatives are when they get very personal, and they do. And that's, again, why I don't personally, there are enough people who are going to tell me about it, I don't need to read about it. But I would use that opportunity, when I was told about it, to personally invite that person or multiple people in to meet with me, and start the conversations that I think are critical to educate them about a more appropriate process. You know, there are limits to what we allow people to do to ourselves through social media. And so, if we allow them to have it impact us in our work, then we're not, we're not really using it the way it was intended. And so, I want to be careful that, you know, we don't allow them to use it to, you know, create a negative atmosphere. And again, back to that kind of communication piece, I would be right up front. I would have another source and another medium saying, there have been comments made on social media on this particular platform, and we're not going to be using that. We're going to be using, you know, this meeting at this time to discuss this issue. And just keep reframing to our benefit the issue, the timetable, and the conversation. That's what we need to do. And I think eventually, it gets into perspective. You'll always have those outliers, and that's just the nature of where we are today. But, you know, we should use it for positive messaging about who we are in the Wilmington Public Schools, and just keep going and taking the high road. And then using our time to really address the other issues face-to-face in a different medium.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can you talk to us about your experience with culturally proficient instruction, its role in schools, and any work you've done with teachers or administrators?
Sure. Well, I'm actually, I'm trying to get, right now, plans for the summer in Leicester. Just had this conversation recently with my superintendent. I took a course in 2015 around culturally proficient education, and it really opened my eyes to things that even I thought I was pretty inclusive and pretty aware and open-minded about lots of different things, and just made aware of just different things that you say that just aren't appropriate. Like, you know, just using a phrase like, "those kids," you know, no matter what group you're talking about, it's already casting aspersions on a group, and how careful we want to make that. I do think that all school systems would benefit for, to become more culturally aware of our language, obviously, in our teaching and our materials. You know, we read it every day. There's a story in the paper about, you know, a teacher using an inappropriate assignment in terms of not being culturally aware, and thinking it's, it's very appropriate. And so, I think that we've got to educate ourselves about what it means to be culturally aware, figure out where and how we can infuse it into our work, and obviously, then from there, introduce it in other areas of our content and our curriculum practices, so that we're, we continue a path of being culturally aware.
Thank you. What has been your greatest professional disappointment, and what did you learn from it?
Oh, just one?
Life's learner, huh?
Yes. I think my greatest professional disappointment was the way my superintendency ended in Neshoba. I think that it was a disappointment mostly because I felt that it was, I just wasn't, I was blindsided by it. And so, I didn't feel that I was given the kind of respect or sensibilities of the role of superintendent to be able to work on the issue or issues that they had, because they just didn't communicate what they were. And so, I had other things going on in my personal life that just really kind of distracted me from giving it a more aggressive fight, if you will. And so, you know, it was just easier to say goodbye and to go, and to go away. So, in that regard, what I've learned from that is, I think that, I think I would definitely have given it more of a fight before I left, and, because I did leave on my own terms. But I would have definitely made it more difficult, or I would have definitely made, made the public more aware of what was happening behind the scenes that inspired, or made me decide to leave.
Thank you. Appreciate the candor. So kind of tagging off of Mrs. Burns, how do you describe the relationship between a superintendent and the school committee? Because there's an interesting relationship there.
It is.
Right?
Absolutely.
And might not always see eye to eye, but at the end of the day, we share the same goal, what's in the best interest of the children.
Right.
And the adults, too, the staff as well. So, describe for us how you see the relationship between the two.
So, it's one that has to develop. You know, it's not, you know, just because I sign a contract, it's, it's not immediate. And it has to develop individually with each of you, but collectively as a group, because you are a group, you are one. But I also have to have that individual rapport with each one of you, and so that takes time. It takes meeting time, it takes conversation, it takes just getting to know us each other personally, and so forth. And so, I think that because it is about a relationship, it's about candor and honesty and forth, being forthright about what you're thinking and what steps you think you're going to take. And, you know, that's what I expect from my colleagues within the organization. I need to expect that from my supervisors. And, you know, we talk all the time internally in education, we want to give feedback, we want to give honest feedback, we want it regular. That's what I need from, from you. And in an odd relationship, in this case, I also have to give that to you, because as you're learning your roles, and many of you have been in your roles for many years, which is great, we need that continuity on school committees, there is a learning curve. And part of my job as superintendent is to teach you. There are other resources, and I definitely want you to explore those. But part of the superintendent's job is to make you aware of what your role But part of the superintendent's job is to make you aware of what your role is and what the law is, and what my role is, and what the law is that supports that, and make sure that the boundaries are respected and understood. We can always have the conversation about those boundaries, but that we, we have to understand what they are and be knowledgeable about them. And when we have differences, bring in people who can help us sort them out, because certainly that's the learning curve, and we need to learn it together. So every time there's a huge turnover, and this is something I learned from my experience, I would have definitely done some teaching earlier with different providers to help understand what the role of school committee was. And it is so that we're all hearing the same thing at the same time, and we're all, you know, walking away with the same understanding of what our roles are, respectively.
Thank you. And as a follow-up, you referred, some of us have been on the school committee longer than others. Some of us will be transitioning out perhaps in the next couple of years, and we'll be getting new people to come on board. If we were to hire you, what do you think we as a group, maybe not these faces, but we as a group would be thinking about that decision five years from now?
About me?
About us hiring you.
Oh, well, my goal is that you would hire me. And in a sense, you do, because every three or five years, whatever the length of the contract is, you make that decision again. And so I hope to be able to educate you, convince you, and make you want to keep hiring me on those, on that basis. And, you know, I think I have a track record of being able to do that when it's groups of people who are truly interested in the work and don't want to make it personal, then I think we, I have a track record to say that it's been very successful.
Great, thank you. Mrs. Kane?
Thank you. I'm just going to go out of this a little bit, the education part. Wilmington has a really well-deserved pride in the fact that we work so well with the town side. And as a result, I think you're aware that, you know, we don't have athletic fees, we don't have bus, we don't pay for the bus, et cetera. So what would you do when you first come in to, to keep that going and even enhance it, although I'm not sure it could be enhanced, but keep that going for the school system, the school side and the town side?
So my first question is, you know, what do people think has made it work thus far? I saw Jeff earlier today and asked a version of that question. And, you know, I think that, you know, is it constant meeting? You know, I'm sure it's about relationship building in that relationship as well. But I'm also sure that it has to do with the honest way that, and I don't think it's this way, but if you will, both sides constantly share the information that you have. The needs of the school are, you know, a part of the Board of Selectmen's sensibilities of things, they're part of the town manager's sensibilities about things. You're not silent about those, and those constantly in front of them help them plan better and plan well. And, you know, I think that's part of that relationship building that you've been able to do over the last, I don't know how long it's been, I think it's been really a long time, which is really outstanding, even through, I think, the transition between, obviously, town managers and superintendents. So I really, I said to Jeff, I said, you've got to go on the road with that, because, you know, whatever you're doing, you're doing an amazing job, because, believe me, there are school systems out there that would love to have that kind of relationship with their town side of things, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Talbot?
I guess I'll just stick with my old question of, why do you feel you'd be the best choice for this position?
I think I'd be the best choice for this position, because in hiring me, you're hiring an experienced superintendent. I have almost 20 years as a superintendent in a variety of different school systems of different sizes, different socioeconomic backgrounds. And with me, you're hiring a problem solver that isn't afraid to roll up his sleeves and do what needs to be done to bring Wilmington to the place that the school committee and the community as a whole wants to bring it. And you would have my commitment of loyalty and leadership to make that happen.
Mr. Mullis, any further questions?
Sure, I have a lot of questions. We're a pretty tight knit community here in Wilmington. There's always something going on. How do you make, or how would you make yourself visible and accessible to, to the community?
So generally, what I've done in the past is I meet with the principals and I say, you know, what's going on in the community, in your schools that you, you want me, you think it's important for me to attend? So I build the schedule first with the, the school in mind. Usually there's someone, either the town manager secretary or even my executive assistant, somebody who, who's aware of what's going on in the community that historically the superintendent's been part of. And so I, I build my calendar in a very practical way, and that's, that's the way I do it, so that I have a presence of mind, not just to have, show my face, but to really build that understanding of what Wilmington is all about. And so, you know, it doesn't matter to me, you know, I saw a tweet earlier this week, and I retweeted it, you know, leadership knows no schedule. You know, it's, it's about doing what you need to do to get the job done and make yourself successful in the job. And so that would be my plan, and it's worked successfully for me.
Thank you.
Can you describe the professional development opportunities you've provided in your district related to supporting special education?
Sure. So most recently, what I've provided is, we've been doing a lot of training on ABA training for our paraprofessionals. By the way, you should be very proud of the number of paraprofessionals you have in your district. I can tell you from firsthand experience that it, it's a, it's a good number. So I've been doing that. We've been doing training on co-teaching for our special educators to be co-trained as a co-teacher with a content-based teacher. We've been doing that for two years, and so I started at our high school. We went into, so we're in year two of our high school, we're in year one with our, our middle school, and next year I hope to be in year two with the middle school and year one with our primary and intermediate school. That's been going very well. It's not PD that I'm providing directly, I've hired a very talented consultant, and that's, that's been, I think, very successful. We've also, I trained, sent out one of our team chairs to be essentially our trainer in-house for transition planning, to teach our special ed teachers how to develop good transition plans, and to train the IEP team about transition planning. Those probably have been my three priorities. There are some technical training that we're doing around the new model for oversight by the Office of Special Education, but that's just something we're doing in-house.
Thank you. What do you see as the most important components to a successful and effective school system?
So I think you have to have well-trained staff. I think you have to have the right combination of resources and a planned use for those resources. And you need to have essentially a, a leadership that knows how to motivate and inspire their staff to fulfill those plans. I think those are the elements that you need. Obviously, you need, you know, a lot, a lot more, but those are the three that I think are under our control. And so I try to spend my time and energy with those things that I think are things I can truly impact. You know, there are a lot of other pieces. You need kids wanting to come to school, wanting to learn. You need to provide opportunities for them to, to be successful in their, in their school environment and create the avenues for that success to happen. But those, those first three elements, I think, are most important.
Very good, thank you.
I'm going to pass over myself, and then I will wrap up. Mrs. Kane?
I'm going to pass over myself. I'll tell you, I really enjoyed this conversation. It's nice to talk education. And your answers were very interesting, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'm actually going to take my question, and this is something we haven't really talked about, but it's in the news a lot, dealing with online and just in, in real time. How, what are your thoughts on combat, combating bullying? It's something that's big, you know?
Sure. So, you know, I think it is happening more online than it is happening in real time, although, you know, there are certainly those occasions that it does. I think through the work that you're doing through PBIS and the social emotional learning are some of the best strategies to develop a culture where bullying just doesn't happen, and it becomes the rarity in the, in the, in the community and in the school department. It takes everybody, though, to be able to eliminate it completely. That means that as adults, we have to look at ways that we treat one another so that we're not modeling inappropriate behavior in our civil, in civic conversations. And, and we need to make sure that we're stamping it out when we see it among kids. Online is tough. Online is really tough. I think, you know, I was just having this conversation with the high school principal in Lester, you know, that the majority of their time now, in terms of discipline, is switched over to being online issues rather than face-to-face, school-based events. And, you know, the, the one good thing about online is the footprint is there, it just takes the savviness of the school leadership to be able to find it. So that's a good thing, if there is a good thing in these circumstances. The other part, though, that's problematic is trying to figure out what the consequences are. Because, again, we, we don't have the right to take away the tool, because oftentimes it's not a school-based tool, it's a personal tool. But, you know, we work with those kids and we work with the parents to really understand why and how, why that is such a, the wrong thing to do and how inappropriate it is, but also that, you know, we use it as that teachable moment to kind of put it back on them that they don't want it to happen to them. And oftentimes, there is an occasion or a history where they were the bullied student, and so it comes back. And so online is tough. It really is. Until we can figure out a way to truly shut kids off of online tools, there's always going to be that rare online story that we're going to hear about.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mullis, any further?
I have a softball question to ask. So you, you prepare yourself to answer questions, but is there anything you hope we would ask that we haven't asked, that you prepare to answer?
That's a good one.
That is not a softball.
Well, that question, not really. I think you've, you've covered all the bases that I would have expected you to cover. I think my tour today, you know, I had some great conversations with people, and nothing, you know, surprised me. You know, I think that it would surprise those who have not worked for other school systems, but there's more in common across school systems than people realize. Names change, maybe the faces, the sizes of school systems, but the issues are the same. And so, no, not really, there hasn't been a question, you know, that hasn't been asked yet.
Thank you.
I can go again?
We can go all night.
This is really my last one. You did talk about well-trained staff. Can you talk about how you retain, attract, develop good administrators and teachers?
So, so let me just talk about administrators. I think administrators need PD just as much as teachers do. And we need to have time together as a team, because we need to grow together as a team so that we can develop that. Not only, you know, it's one thing to put norms on, on a piece of paper and say, these are our norms as administrative teams, and this is how we're going to teach it, but work with each other. But it's another thing to actually have the time together in real, real time, if you will, real events, real conversations, where we can practice those norms so that, you know, if one of the norms is, you know, it's, this is a safe place to take risks, that we can share the conversation and what it looks like to take a risk and have difference of opinion, and to be able to unpack that difference of opinion in a civil way, in a polite way, in a professional way, and come back to, now how are we going to use that to move forward? So I think PD for principals is really important. Like any PD, I think it needs to be as, the ideal PD to me is if it's, you know, decided that everybody needs it, then we provide it to everybody, and we figure out ways to do that and to make that happen. But I really like building capacity within the district, so I like the train, the trainer model. Again, whether it be teachers or principals, I like to train individuals to become experts. And then, and then we have it, because we're always going to have new staff. We're always going to be, you know, developing new, new areas. And we, so we need to have people who can, on a yearly basis, revisit certain topics, because we just, it's necessary. And so I like to train the trainer model, and that's the way I would try to go forward.
Thank you. Mrs. Burns, any?
I actually don't have a per se question, but I wanted to raise a good question. Do you, are you familiar with PLCs and building that? When you talk about, you know, the trade, you know, train and teach and the trade, that methodology, is that what, is that how you would approach it as a professional learning community, or is this just a little more?
I think that's one way to approach it. I mean, certainly professional learning communities are very helpful. It does take training to make a team work well as a professional learning community. I think that, but yeah, that's, that's one way to approach it, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Kane or Mr. Talbot, have you?
Tapped out.
You're tapped out, okay. Would you like to share any final parting thoughts with us, things that are important for us to know about you?
Sure. Well, I would, you know, just like to start off by saying I really enjoyed the day, I really do. I think, well, I don't want to make a living out of it. Interviews are valuable for people to center themselves and really think about what they believe about, in this case, children, and about teaching and learning and leadership. So thank you, I really appreciate that very much. I, I think that kind of, my summary is really more about the question about, you know, why I'm the best candidate for this job. So sorry if I'm repeating myself, but I think in me, you will get someone who will give you everything he has to move you to the next level, to work with you side by side, and to be in front of you to protect you, but also behind you to support you. And so if you are, find it in your wisdom to vote me as your next superintendent, you will find somebody that's going to stay here a long time and make this my next stop.
Thank you very much for your time. So the Wilmington School Committee has concluded our agenda items this evening, so before we, we say goodnight, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Are we going to discuss when we're meeting again?
I can certainly share with so.
During now or afterwards?
We're going to meet again tomorrow night as planned for our next two candidates.
Oh, okay, I know tomorrow night, but I meant, are we going to know ahead of time whether we're going to meet again?
The discussion?
Yeah.
We do have a meeting on the, our regular school committee meeting on the 14th?
The 14th.
Wednesday? Valentine's Day, that's how we're going to be spending our Valentine's Day. So romantic. And superintendent search is an agenda item?
Okay.
So we'll see where, where the night takes us then?
Okay.
Okay. Any other discussion on that?
I have a question, follow-up on Mrs. Kane. So at a regular scheduled meeting on Wednesday, if the discussion doesn't get us to where we need to be, do we set, do we schedule a time, or do we schedule a date at that time for discussion?
For deliberation?
I would think that would be appropriate.
Okay.
Any other?
Okay, now I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Mr. Mullis, seconded by Mrs. Bryson.
Okay, we need adjourned.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.